Good evening, everyone. I am Mike O'Reilly, Chairman of the Town and Land Planning and Zoning Commission. You are now at the December 7 regular meeting. It is 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We don't actually seek any alternates. Let's call the calls starting on my right.
Dominique Smolino, alternate commissioner.
Ryan Condon, commissioner.
Ian Ebrosey, commissioner.
Bruno Maiini, commissioner.
Robert West, commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, commissioner.
Bill Holsworth, staff.
Sarah Stroud, recording secretary.
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to have, to add clerical.
A biennial organizational meeting.
Biennial organizational meeting. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Start with biennial organizational meeting. According to the Planning and Zoning Commission bylaws, a biennial organizational meeting shall be held at the first regularly scheduled meeting on or after the first Thursday of December following town elections, at which time officers shall be elected, and these bylaws will be viewed and made part of the minutes of the biennial meeting. Okay. Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Mike O'Reilly as Chair. Planning and zoning.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? All those abstaining? The ayes have it. I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Bruno Maiini as Vice Chair.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Go ahead, Phil.
I make a motion to nominate Ryan Condon as Secretary.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstaining? Then the motion passes. The officers have been seated for the next two years, and if there's any questions about the Town Land Planning and Zoning Commission bylaws, this is the time to bring them up. Any questions? If not, then they will be made part of the minutes of tonight's meeting. Thank you. Next on the agenda is general public participation. This is a time when members of the public may address the commission on items not on the agenda tonight or not likely to come up on the agenda in the near future. Yes, just name an address for the record.
Certainly.
I'm pleased. Go ahead.
Susan Binay, 25 Barrow.
Please address the commission, not the audience or any other member.
That's fine. I'm about to read from a letter that submitted and was published in the website. They'd like to request that it be read into the minutes for public record, and it's regarding the property at 604 Main Street on the corner of Barrow and Route 25. An egregious zoning violation exists with the proposed auto body shop at 604 Main Street at the corner of Barrow and Monroe. This property by law is in a B1 district. According to Monroe Planning and Zoning Regulations, such a B1 district is designated for retail establishments, personal services, professional offices, medical offices, and banks. Town zoning regulations state an auto body shop is not permitted except in an I2 industrial district, Article 8, Page 12. And this is with good reason. According to the EVA, auto body shops emit hazardous air pollutants, particulate pollution, and volatile organic compounds. The pollutants contribute to a variety of health problems. Paints, cleaners, and paint strippers can release chemical substances into the air, can form ground-level ozone that is linked to a number of respiratory effects. How, one might ask, has this come to pass? Town officials admit that the zoning certificate for the body shop in the B1 district was issued in error. Officials also indicate that they are looking to the town attorney for a remedy. However, some work has begun on the property, and the licensing process has continued to go forward. A business is approved by the signatures of the zoning enforcement officer, 952023, the building official, 10242023, and the fire marshal, 10242023. It appears as though, for reasons unknown to the public, the town intended to proceed despite the zoning disparity. Moreover, as published on the town website, the primary purpose of planning and zoning in Monroe is to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare of our community. Residents of Barrow Road, Vincent Drive, Verna Road, and Mellon Patch Lane argue that this is not the case. The health and safety of our families is at risk. Many of us live in close proximity, some adjacent to this site. Further, the number of parked cars becomes an eyesore, and devaluation of our properties is an imminent issue. Planning and zoning must not look the other way. Allowing the business to open in an improper zone is illegal and certainly a dangerous precedent. The remedy for the town is to, one, admit the error, two, recall the certificate, and three, issue a cease and desist order signed by me and endorsed by concerned residents on those roads named and also the members of our Stephanie Task Force. And I don't know if I could just ask the committee to perhaps comment on where this stands as of today.
Well, we've already done number one. We've admitted that there was an error by a rookie staff member who's no longer with us. And then we're working on a resolution which is very close at hand, believe it to me. And so I don't have the resolution tonight, but will shortly, because I understand what you're saying. We all do.
Okay. So will someone be contacting public?
Oh, you'll know, yes. You'll definitely know. No secrets in town. Any other members of the public? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Rick Smith. I live at 61 Hillcrest Road in Monroe. I want to address also 64 Main Street, but let me preface it by saying, the last time I stepped up to this mic and talked to you, it was regarding 687 Main Street. That's George and Terry Mish. That was Circle Dot Rosler's hot dog stand. I contacted the lawyer after I got informed from you that there was a change there, a request to change the zoning. I contacted the lawyer. I discussed it with numerous residents of Monroe County Terrace and Hillcrest Road in the proximity. We were all in approval. So I came here, and I told you that everything, that we are all in approval. And I only say that because I'm not a person that is, you know, reacts and says, "Not in my backyard." I'm not a NIMBY, okay? I am, as a matter of fact, the Commissioner, I'm the Inland Wetlands Commissioner in town, and I am concerned. Before I moved to Monroe, I lived in Detroit. I was an automotive engineer. I worked for a company that did safety systems, airbags. We did crash tests. So I can tell you that, and it's normal that, you know, after a crash, vehicles leak antifreeze and other, you know, batteries sometimes are broken. You don't know it until a couple days later. You know, there's leakage of things, and there's going to be a need for cars to come in, sit for a couple days while the parts come in, and then get worked on. Takes very good procedures, trained employees. You know, these guys are working with paint and other things like that anyhow, but it takes a really good shot along the lines of what we have just a mile down the road at Townline. Townline has got their act together. They've been here for 50 years. They're a valued business in our town. They're doing a great job. I don't know if you, the town may not realize that as much, but I can tell you, because we have a permit in front of the IWC right now for that Townline facility, and I went on a site visit, and I looked at what they're doing, because there is wetlands in that area. There is wetlands also at 604 Main Street. You realize that the west branch of the Paconic River is right there. So normally, we work, the IWC works with 100 feet of upper review area, but it is in our power to expand that when we find that the inland wetlands has an impact that is likely. And in this case, I believe that's the case. And if we don't have a resolution, and I think you're gonna have a resolution, because I talked to Terry last Friday, Saturday night, and it was imminent supposedly, but we don't have it tonight. So that's why I'm talking to you. And I'm saying that if it's not likely, I will propose it that we want to take a look at it. Inland wetlands should take a look at it to protect the waters of this town, especially the west branch of the Paconic River. It's taken enough abuse, and we don't need any more there. So tonight, I'm here to express my First Amendment right petition to the commission for a redress of this grievance. And I'm asking for the same thing that you just heard. Cease and desist or revoking the approval immediately. The consequences, and it's not a threat, but the consequences, I got good news and bad news. The good news is that CNM Automotive has not done anything on the property, to my knowledge, spent money on this property, to my knowledge. However, the owner, and I've talked to the workers, because I live in the proximity of this location. I've talked to the workers who performed the work. They did painting, they did siding, they did roofing. It's all maintenance of the building that would occur with any business. Bill Holsworth knows me very well. I used to be on the EDC. I want the right businesses in the right location. This is not the case. This is not zoned for this. We don't want it for numerous reasons, both environmental and because of, and you're gonna hear it from other folks here tonight, we don't want this in this location. I'm asking you to do this. The good news is that there's only maintenance. The bad news is, we may appear to be a ragtag group of people that, you know, they're just ticked off. And I want to correct that perception, because I don't think it's true. I think that there's an intelligent group of people who are really committed to getting this reversed as soon as possible. And we want it reversed as soon as possible to save this town money. Because if we don't get it reversed, this group will organize, and we will get the retainer for legal help. And we're on the clock. We shouldn't be here tonight. We don't want to charge the town. We don't want to cause any problems. But this is a serious problem. And members of the commission, as Tom said, there ain't always an easy way out. We will stand our ground, and we won't back down. I'm just promising that we're gonna take action here, and we're very serious about it. It's not a threat. I respectfully request cease and desist and revoke the approval. I've talked to a lot of people about it in the area, including businessmen such as Mr. Semino at the Atlantic Sporting Goods, some other folks. There's a lot of people behind us. You're gonna find that out in a minute, I think. I think there'll be other people behind me. I appreciate your time. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Just ask the public if you could try to limit your remarks for three or four minutes, and please don't repeat over and over what's already been said, because you're just wasting the time of everyone here. Thank you. Just your name and address.
Yes. Amanda Fredericks, 440 Web Circle. I actually attended the sub-meeting, but I wanted to bring it up to the public for here concerning 421 Web Circle. It's a non-conforming lot that they're trying to build, a 2,500-square-foot home. The existing home was 720 square feet. There's wetlands. It's 0.93 acres, and we're in an R3, which is three-acre zoning. They've been blasting for the past two weeks. And so we're just trying to put that on record and find out what you guys are going to be doing to look into that.
Yes, thank you. Please, any of one else interested in addressing the commission? Please raise your hand. And come on forward and just state your name and address.
My name is Joe Delvecchio. I live at 7 Trailside Drive, which is the property just opposite the age-restricted community across the street, 1271.
Excuse me, can you speak up just a little bit?
If you want to speak into the microphone, it is amplified. Just the address again.
7 Trailside Drive. The project that I'm questioning here is 1271, which is across the street. I tried, you know, to tune in during your last meeting, but the transmission was kind of broken up, and I didn't get a chance really to put any questions in. So I'm using this time to ask some questions. We're concerned now that the work has begun there, you know, we're concerned that the driveway will almost be directly opposite our house. And our house is probably the most affected, most impacted by this development that's going up. So it's just not clear. We looked at some of the drawings, and they seem to be conflicting sometimes where the driveway will start and where it'll end, you know, across the street. Because, you know, as a consequence of the proposed amendment to the regulations, there's gonna be, the promise is to be more traffic. And so we're concerned about the traffic going in and out, particularly if the proposed amendment, you know, goes through and, you know, kind of destroys whatever privacy that we have. So can any measures be taken to mitigate the loss of privacy? And the increased noise also? We also have questions about what type of vehicles may be allowed on the property.
Sir, what property are you talking about? I'm sorry.
We're talking about 1271, proposed.
Age-restricted.
Age-restricted.
Yeah.
Okay, not a 12 motor retard pipe?
Yeah.
I heard trail side. I was a little lost. Thank you.
Yeah, so we're concerned about the increase in the traffic coming in and out and the type of vehicles also that go into, that can be, you know, parked at the site. Residents, or future residents, they're all ones of dump truck or something, and we have to listen to that dump truck going in and out, you know, going in and out of development. We don't know if there are any restrictions as to the type of vehicles that might be allowed in that area. Also, since work has begun, we also have questions as to what, you know, permitted work hours are. I know that, I think anyway, that the usual work restriction hours are between 8:00 AM and, you know, something like, they're close to sunset. This morning, for example, I mean, they started at 7:20. I happened to be up, and I heard the heavy machinery noise, you know, at 7:20. I don't know if that's permitted. So, you know, I also just wanted to voice concern that our, you know, privacy and tranquility has really taken a big hit. And we're also concerned about the effects on property value, since we're most directly impacted at this. We made quite an investment in this place just a few years ago. Apart from, you know, apart from that, you know, when the agenda item comes up, then maybe I'll have some words there. If it's permitted.
I don't think we're discussing that tonight.
I thought you did. I thought there was on the agenda.
Change tonight, yes. But that's.
Yes.
Change was gonna be addressed tonight, right?
I think you're just voting on it tonight. There's no public hearing. As far as the maps that go, they are online, so you can go on to the.
They're very hard to read. I mean, if there was a big, you know, if there was a big plan somewhere, that would be very beneficial. Or if you had somebody here from the building.
At the time of the hearing, but we don't have them here all the time.
Right. Okay. Well, they have to be available for somebody sometime, somewhere.
Oh, the plans? You can come to town. They can sit down and put them out on a table for you? Yeah, full size.
Yeah.
So if that, you know, if you're gonna be voting on that, and there's, you know, there's no comment allowed, I mean, you know, I'd just like to register my voice in opposition.
Okay.
Extra houses, you know, just set up as barracks kind of destroys the whole landscape and really devalues the rest of the property. There's no reason for it. I don't see so. Does it turn the public?
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight? Ms. Lindstrom?
Good evening. My name is Cathy Lindstrom, Guinea Road, Monroe. I started following planning and zoning when I first moved to Monroe. I can't believe it was 1968. I've been here a little while. And then I learned that the problems in the land use department were basically all staff-driven. They were overworked, underqualified, and lack clear understanding and direction of their jobs, resulting in chronic complaints, delays, applications, you know, being put on delay, lack of zoning enforcement, turnover, staff turnover. All these years later, nothing has changed. At your November 16 meeting, I asked how it happened that an auto body collision shop was approved on Main Street in a B1 zone, where it was clearly not allowed, and I did not get an answer. But tonight, you made sure that we all heard. The answer was a result of the fact of a staffing error. The land use department continues to be short-staffed, as it has been for years. Not having a town planner or an active zoning enforcement officer causes dissension and hardship among staff and constituents. Why is it so hard for Monroe to attract and hire qualified, experienced candidates? Why are we content to provide on-the-job training? Staffing issues haven't been seriously addressed. Presisting zoning regulation, noncompliance continues all over town. There are amendments that are proposed by developers that accommodate them that may or may not reflect what the rest of the town would benefit from. And there's always a minimal regard or consideration for the master plan, the town plan of development. The regulations that the Planning and Zoning Commission has are adopted to protect Monroe residents and to keep growth properly controlled. If relevant department heads are required to sign off on proposals, it's obvious that they should read and understand what they are signing off on, not just checkmark. They should know what's going on. Result of the established procedures not being followed is the approval of a non-permitted use in a B1 zone. If we require a process for approvals and for permits, why is it that they are not being followed? And why is it there are no penalties imposed? I reiterate that there is no justification for failure of the land use and building departments to do their jobs, to follow established procedures and honor the PNC regulations. A body shop is not a service station. The matter should be resolved quickly to avoid any further legal expenses on the part of the town and on the taxpayers. And as was said previously, it should be immediately addressed so that no continuation of work is done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to address the commission, please, just to let it come out, come on forward.
Good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Joel Lennecker. I reside at 78 Huntingtown Road in the town of Monroe. I just have some questions. Have we hired a new town planner?
A planning administrator, yes.
So no planner, but an administrator?
Correct.
Okay.
That position was changed.
So we have no intentions of hiring a certified land use planner?
They will be certified.
But you said we're not gonna, the position has changed to a town administrator, not a planner?
The title has changed to a planning administrator.
Okay, so there's no planner? We have no planner?
Planning is gonna be part of that job, but it's not titled planning.
So the job description for the town plan, do we have a job description for the town planner?
No.
We've never had one.
We do. It changed. It changed. The town council voted to change that six months ago, eight months ago.
So town council needs to have a question to that. Thank you. Second is, do we have a zoning enforcement officer?
Yes, we do.
And we have one?
Correct. Yes.
And that zoning enforcement officer's job description is that they are in charge of enforcing all zoning regulations?
I believe, as far as I know.
So it appears on the street that the zoning enforcement officer feels that they are only enforcing inland wetlands and not the entire town of zoning. Just saying it's rumor, I'm not saying it's fact, but I'm saying it's out there. But it is my understanding that this person then does supervise all regulations, correct?
Enforces, yes.
Enforces, excuse me, enforces, correct? Thank you. Number three, your commission reports to whom?
To you. We're elected by you.
I know you're elected by me. However, the day-to-day, or since we don't have a town planner, we have an administrator, right? Who is going, I assume you're the gentleman who executes the decisions by the commission?
They ask, yes.
Okay. All right. So the commission really only answers to the Connecticut State, PNC, right? The reg set by state of Connecticut, PNC is who you really report, not report to, but take your leave from.
The regulations.
The town regulations.
The town regs, but the town regs are also controlled by PNC, and First Selectman has no responsibility to you. And you don't have any responsibility to them, technically. You are the legal body, other than zoning board of appeals, correct? I'm just trying to understand how the process works going forward, because there are a lot of projects, as you are learning, that the little things are tripping people up. And if we have it very clear to the public as to who does what and how the process works, then people can come to the right department and can get their answers, and they don't have to take much of your time. So I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just trying to make sure I understand how the process works. And lastly, have the signage regs changed within the last year?
We haven't voted on that yet.
Okay, that's fine. So my question is, and I have not, I apologize, I did not read the signage regs before I got here tonight. However, the sandwich boards, it appears that every business gets a sandwich board that they put out on the street and are allowed to leave them there as a permanent sign. My suggestion to you, as you look at the regs, is that, if I understand it correctly, they're allowed a front sign based upon the linear running feet of the property, as well as a sign board on the side of the property. Maybe we get rid of the side regulation and allow everybody to have a sandwich board, because clearly we are not enforcing that. And if it's unenforceable, times change, that maybe the regs needs to change. So we're not. so we're not sending our zoning enforcement officer out there to collect sandwich boards or to issue permits for those sandwich boards. That's all I got.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Uh, yes, sir. Write down and, uh, just state your name and address for the record.
Uh, it's Ron Portamontic, seven eighty-one Main Street, and one of the owners of Townline Body Shops. Townline Body Shop Incorporated has been in the same location for over forty-eight years, and we are deeply troubled about what is happening at six oh four Main Street. How can the town approve a business that violates its own rules from planning and zoning? Not only were the rules violated, but it appears the entire Planning and Zoning Commission was bypassed. There was no public hearing, no meeting minutes, no opportunity for public to convey their concerns. Now that it's been brought to light, what is the plan to correct this issue? According to Monroe's zoning regulations, this type of business violates ten point one, schedule of permitted land uses by zoning district. Ten point two, schedule of required off-street parking. And the sign that was installed around eleven six twenty-three in this year, as of twelve five, there has been no permit for the sign on file for planning and zoning, which also violates six point three point one, sign permits. And also, it seems that there's been no enforcement from the town so far. I'm in favor of bringing business to, to the area, but there, there needs, there needs to be an adherence to the rules and regulations. Additionally, all businesses should be treated equally and on the same playing field. As a business owner, a tax, and a taxpayer in the town of Monroe, I would like to know who approved this application, and I want to know why the zoning rules and regulations were ignored. Residents and other businesses, owners in the area, deserve transparency from the town officials. The only remedy I see is issue a cease and desist order. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other members of the public here tonight that would like to address the commission on any issues that are not before us tonight? Any members of the public online that would like to address the commission? Please, um, press your raised by hand button, and you will be recognized. Uh, seeing none, one more time, anybody here tonight have any people that would like to address the commission on?
Can I address it again?
Is it something new or different? Sure.
So I just, uh.
Just your name and address for the.
Again, it's Rick Smith, sixty-one Hill Crest Road. I just wanna say that, uh, I work with Cheryl Valerie, and we talked about her a little bit tonight. This town, I, I think this town owes her a debt of gratitude. I hope she stays, because she's overburdened right now with all of the work that she's gotta do. I realize that Bill is trying to take on some responsibilities, but I think Bill's got his plate full too. So I'm just saying that we need, we don't, we wanna stop the bleeding, so thank you very much. And I really appreciate the town employees that we've got, and, uh, highly value them.
Well, as you know, there's a shortage of qualified applicants for many positions, not only municipal, but medical and the business world as well, and we struggle, just like everyone else does, in finding and hiring and retaining qualified people.
I understand that, I, I've hired.
You make a good point, we do wanna retain the people that we do have.
I personally, if I've gone through ten, over ten thousand resumes, I've hired hundreds of people. I, I know what HR goes through, but in this case, perhaps Cheryl knows the, the role, she should be involved in the interview process, or at least with the final candidates, a screening of some type. I know that she's got a lot on her plate, but she, she needs good competent people, not people that, okay, we'll fit them in and give them a lot of training. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, if that's the last public comment, we'll go on to, uh, public hearings tonight. First public hearing is ZCA twenty twenty-three dash oh five. Monroe Town Pike. This is a continuation from November the sixteenth. Do we have any new exhibits of?
Um, the legal memos?
Any new, anything new since our last, uh, meeting?
The, the, the plans were provided to the commission, I believe they, um, we did meet with.
Up to the plans?
Yep, we met with ARB. ARB had, um, some comments in regards to the parapet wall on O'Reilly's, to raise that, to make sure the mechanicals were hidden, um, from the comments that were previously made. I'm sorry, sir. From the comments that were previously, uh, made on this building to O'Reilly's, uh, they did add wainscoting, uh, around the building. They added stone work around the foundation, the pillars, and the entranceway. They added cornices at the top of the pillars to give it more of that colonial look. And ARB, the only thing that they requested of them was to raise the parapet walls to ensure that the mechanicals were, were hidden.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And for the applicant?
Uh, for the applicant, Rich Roberts from Howard and New Stage, and we have, uh, Randy Meyer from Bowler.
Gotta stay open, Kathy, sorry.
Who's here as well, I have picture of the building.
Dark over here.
Picture of the site.
Can't see.
For him on.
I'll believe it again.
Can we share it up on the screen?
I'm not gonna test my technology challenges. Let me see, I have notes on this, I'll be one second. Sharing.
Want your wrist? You don't have any plans, put it out for?
Yeah, the most better. Thank you.
Bill, you have packet on this first?
Yeah, we have packets.
Yeah, you should have packets.
Architecture changed, do we have anything on that?
You should have.
Were they, were they dropped off? Did they come in today?
Yeah.
Okay, what time did they come in today?
Six fifty-five.
That's why we don't have them.
They just came in at three November sixteenth.
I had to take one, came in late today. Staff wasn't here at six fifty-five.
I was here.
You gotta have.
I'll go back to my responsibility of sharing content. See if I can even do that.
They're all different?
Sure.
Oh, these are one for each.
Who would you like me to make a, um?
Sorry, Randy Meyer.
So these, make him a co-host. I speak to X the right way, Randy, you should be able to now control the screen.
Can everybody hear me?
Just go this way.
Here we go. Can everybody see that?
Yes, sir.
Huge success on my part. It's actually really shot there. Where are we?
Hey, Randy, do you wanna go over?
Sure, so yep, so this is the, uh, this is the, the building that was unanimously approved by the, by the ARB. Um, as you can see, folks, we've, we've added some stones, there's a stone veneer that's been added, uh, as well as this, um, this parapet up top. Uh, and there is this red material here, I believe it's a, it's an Ephes, uh, material with the O'Reilly channel letters, uh, kind of mounted on top of it. Um, and I mean, that's, that's, that, that's kind of the stuff. You know, we're hopeful that, that you folks, um, that you folks are okay with it. Um, like I said, we did, we did meet with the ARB and they did, uh, unanimously, uh, approve it.
Are you good? For the, for the site itself, there were some changes, do you have that?
I do, let me share that. So in terms of the site changes, uh, this is, this is the new plan here, uh, it's a colored landscape rendering. Previously, if you remember, there was a, um, there was a retaining wall along the, the Westerly property line here, the left side of the property. We've since eliminated that wall. Um, I know that was, it was approximately five feet off the property line, and what we, what, what we're proposing to do now is, um, our foundation wall is gonna kind of act as a retaining wall, an integral, uh, retaining wall and foundation wall, uh, that'll be part of the building, and we've talked with the structural engineer about that. Um, in addition to that, we've increased some of the buffers, uh, some of the landscaping buffers around the property. I believe previously in this area here, this wa, this was, uh, previously a seven-foot setback. We've increased it now to eleven feet. And then over here in this area also, um, on the Easterly property line, uh, we previously had the parking, uh, I believe it was roughly five feet off the property line, and now it's just, it's, it's right around eleven feet. Uh, so we've increased the buffers around the property, um, based on some of the comments from the, uh, from the commission. And I know there was a couple other comments that folks had about delivery trucks and timing, uh, how long it takes for O'Reilly to, uh, uh, to do their deliveries. We did speak with O'Reilly, uh, what they told us is that it's typically about one to two hours, uh, for a truck to load, uh, to, to load and unload, um, and it's typically done, they would do it during off-hours when the store isn't open, um, just so they're not blocking cars and, uh, customers from getting into some of the parking spaces. And then, I mean, beyond that, that, that's kind of the, the, the highlights of the changes to the plans. Uh, we've also, uh, responded to the, some of the town engineer's comments. He had some comments on some, some stormwater items, uh, some technical details, and we did respond to those. I guess we're hopeful that those could be, uh, I guess, issue, or, or, you know, approved as like a, like a condition of approval, that, if the commission would be okay with that. Uh, but we feel confident that we've addressed his concerns. And, and that, that's kind of the highlights of some of the changes that were made. I know, Rich, is there anything else that, that you'd like to add?
I think the only other kind of site change was that some of the parking spaces were relocated to increase the side yard setbacks.
Yeah.
Uh, so that, but those four spaces that are kind of on the road uh, are in lieu of ones that had been at the end of some of the parking aisles, just basically to, to consolidate the parking and, and, uh, provide greater, uh, green space on the setbacks. We had looked at, uh, the green roof concept, and, um, after careful consideration, concluded that it was not, there is, you know, the possibility that we could do a white roof of some kind to minimize the amount of heat absorption and so forth, but, uh, you know, on a building like this, the green roof just wasn't, wasn't technically or economically feasible. Uh, I think that was, that was pretty much it as far as, um, responses to the comments that were raised at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you, we'll go to the commissioners for any questions that they might have. We'll start with Commissioner Lupo on my left.
Thank you. Um, yeah, thank you for making me a space to have comments last time. Um, the one question I have though is the lot size. Is it still under an A?
Yes, I mean, we have not changed that regulation yet, it's still legal. Half the size is the.
Size is still legal, okay.
It is legal.
Alright, that was my only question.
Yeah, I mean, you had me spreading. Um, you know, we determined that that regulation had not yet been.
Okay.
I have no questions.
Um, when you pull into O'Reilly's, on the right-hand side, it looks like a pad of some sort? What is that?
Yeah, that's, that's actually gonna be a, uh, it's, it tended to be the pad-mounted transformer.
Look at you. Okay, um, and side where it's facing Panera, you said you have eleven feet there?
Yes, correct. It's actually, it's out here, I'll, let me share the black and white site plan, it's actually a little bit more than that.
Yeah, it's almost twelve, but.
What does our reg say about that? This is a, overlay, so we should.
On the left side, right, it's actually a little bit more, so it's just under fourteen feet, uh, to the parking.
And, uh, the building to the opposite side of the Panera where the insurance agency is, the plants you added in front of the parking spots, are those, are those, those are low plants? They're not like, it's not gonna create, um.
Yeah, it's not gonna create the issue that he had.
With the leaves and.
Those are gonna be kind of low shrubbish sorts of things.
I saw that you added some, some trees to the backside of the property, which is great, thank you. Pretty good. Okay, Commissioner Ambrose, yeah, uh, in the seventh, uh, square foot building, how many parking spaces are required to have?
Well, this is a, um, no, it's MDD. Yeah.
So we can determine how many. How many is standard?
Standard.
I think thirty-two.
Thirty-two, you only have twenty-five?
We're doing twenty-five, yeah.
It was also specifically requested at the sub-commission meeting to reduce the number of parking spaces from what they originally presented, to reduce it so that there was more road frontage, if the commissioners at that meeting recall.
No, I understand that, I'm saying to, I know what their use is, but that use may not stay there. So if the use doesn't stay there, it turns out to be a restaurant or something in that category, where you need more parking, then, I don't understand why we changed the requirement of, of parking.
We didn't change the requirements, we're allowing this.
No, I, no, I understand.
We may not allow it, you.
That's the other, that's the question I had there, then, um, so ARB, maybe this was a New England character building?
They asked for the New England character, which is similar to what you asked for, and that's when, uh, O'Reilly's put on the, the stone veneer. They changed the siding from what it was to having more of a, uh, like a texture one-eleven kind of a look. It's not texture one-eleven, but the, the vertical lines on it.
The air conditioning units and everything going to be.
On the roof.
On the roof.
On the roof, which is why the parapet walls were raised, to hide the, uh, mechanicals that would be on the roof.
So all mechanicals are on the roof?
Yes.
How about the electrical box, where's that at, located at?
Is that in the building?
Yeah, no, that's, uh, that's a transformer, that's a trans, that's the electrical box coming in?
Yeah, transformer. Everything else is on the ground, I would assume.
So they didn't have an issue with like putting like some kind of a, different kind of roof on here, instead of a flat roof, to make it look, look a little bit more New England? I mean, that's part of our regulation. There's no comments on that?
They, they look for a colonial look, indigenities to New England.
I like the building.
Um, they asked for blocking in the mechanicals on the roof by raising the parapets a little bit higher. They thought that, uh, it complemented well with the Noble, the Panera, and the Aldis that have been proposed.
This is the backside.
There was a question as related to the background on the sign.
Yeah.
And one of the commissioners requested solar to be looked at, uh, as a, uh, as a. as a, as a potential electrical solution. And those were the comments from ARB.
This is the sign.
Okay, Commissioner Chandin.
Uh, no questions.
No question.
Okay, then we'll go to the public as this is public hearings. Any member of public here tonight that would like to comment on specific application, please raise your hand. Please come forward and just state your name and address.
Wally Towers, 3 Wheeler Road. Just looking this over, I did actually attend the architectural meeting for it. Out of curiosity, you know, saw the process there. Personally, I would like to see that white vertical metal look and look something horizontal. So it kind of blends in a little bit more with the, with the gas station with Panera. But I kind of rather discuss, just look at, you know, when developers propose things. If I remember correctly, this building is proposed to be, what, 7,453 square feet? It was something that had come up, I, I thought it was mentioned the last month, that when it went first to committee, they actually were proposing something bigger and shrunk it down. I don't know if that was correct or not, maybe I'm just misunderstanding. But I went to the corporate O'Reilly site. I don't know if you, any of you have done that, just to look what they, what they're looking for. What is corporate O'Reilly looking for? So it's kind of interesting. Typically looking for $30,000, $35,000 square feet of land. This fits that, and that's good. They're looking for between 30 and 40 parking places. They're asking for 25. Work says they're looking for 30 and 40. So you would think if they're looking for a smaller number of parking spaces, they're probably looking on the smaller size of the building. So they're looking for, what, 7,400 square foot building we're looking at here? Our stores typically range from 6,800 to 7,225. So we're looking for something bigger that they typically ask for with smaller parking spaces. I think this is one of these where people are shooting for the moon. And all right, pick guys a little bit, but they're not giving back enough. They want 25 parking spaces, make the building smaller. That addresses their setback issue even. So why don't we think about that? That's right on a corporate site. Just wanted to throw that out before you.
Well, thank you very much for the information. Is anyone else here tonight that would like to address the commission on this application? Anyone online that would like to address the commission on this application? Seeing none, then we'll go back to the applicant.
I mean, I really can't explain what the, you know, the thought process is as to how they look at a particular market, decide how big a store, how big a parking lot. But I'm sure that there is, you know, there has been some considerable consideration given to how big a store is necessary, perhaps larger in terms of, you know, inventory areas and so forth. That's the sales floor. You know, I think it's kind of within the margin of error of the numbers the gentleman provided. It's not, it's not any kind of huge anomaly from, you know, there's sort of generic expectation in terms of, you know, sizes of stores and parking. And frankly, I've been, you know, planning and zoning commissions in Connecticut have been making effort over the last few years to kind of right-size the amount of parking that's required rather than develop a site with enough parking for the Saturday before Christmas.
Okay. This is part one of the. Who wants to close this part of the hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the commissioners, any last questions?
Before we do, the commission asked last time to check with the chief of police and the fire marshal as it related to traffic and any concerns they might have. Fire marshal is still under review, but he didn't see any, any big concerns that he needed to address right away. The chief came back and told me that it doesn't look to be a large traffic generator, and he had no concerns with the single curb cut. It doesn't appear to be an issue for him.
Okay, then we'll close this portion of the hearing. Now, they are also looking for an SEP 2023-10. The, the presentation tonight covered both the zone change and the SEP, I believe. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
I think the only change in the zone change from the last session is that we increased the side setback from five feet to 11 feet to reflect the change in the plan. So that, you know, the requirement is greater in terms of setback than it had been in our previous document.
Okay, are there any questions from the commissioners? Are there any questions from the public? Yes. Please come forward with your name and address.
I'm going to repeat my name and address again.
Yes, please.
3 Wheeler Road. Just got. At what point does the change happen? You know, we realized there was an issue with Panera as far as this overlay zone and going up to the middle of the street. Even at the meeting last two weeks ago, you were saying, well, you weren't even sure. You know, has it been implemented yet? When does it get implemented? At what point? And can you put a moratorium on any new applications until the new rule goes into effect?
Do you want to address that, Bill? I mean, we're going to implement it as soon as we possibly can. I think we're having another meeting in a week or two to finalize that. Then it'll come back here early February for a public hearing.
So anybody here at the next public hearing gets me.
So it becomes effective when the commission votes on it?
That's public.
Today that they vote on it, it becomes effective?
I was under the impression it was already voted on and this change was done.
No, we looked back and checked the record and it wasn't.
And there's not that many lots, so I wouldn't worry about too many things squeaking in.
I mean, my point is, why don't you just, like I said, just put a moratorium on any new, so it doesn't happen? You guarantee it. We're not going to take any new applications on this change because we are working on changing this rule. I don't think that's extremely difficult to do.
I don't think we can do that legally. Nope.
Honestly, I, I don't know. If that's something that has to be noticed for two weeks in voices and then voted on, we'd be the same amount of time out on getting something like that to be on your agenda for a public hearing to put that moratorium in place? I don't know. I'm not the attorney on land use. It would be something that would have to be elevated to, somebody that knows that answer.
Okay, I mean, because like I said, just two weeks ago, it seemed like the board wasn't even sure.
We're sure now.
Okay, so that's why, you know, just, just kind of put the brakes on, that's all. And let's get this settled. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Did you want to close this one?
The process for implementing a moratorium is technically an amendment to the regulations. So you'd have to go through the same process, set a moratorium as you would to change the regulations. So you might as well do what you intend to do in the first place.
I'm off next week to take the bar exam.
Well, thank you.
Only need a week.
So you got to close this hearing?
Yes.
All right, so we'll be closing this hearing as well. The final public hearing for tonight is the execution fill permit 2023-0464 Cambridge Drive, 64 Independence Drive. This is a continuation from 11/16/23. Do you have any new adjutants?
The, only the technical reports that were distributed via email yesterday.
Thank you. And for the applicant.
C4 and a Red Bull for this one.
That's what should be written right there for you.
Right there.
And there's no capitals in it. And I got to go back to participants. And Myron, I'm going to take you off of co-host. Draw co-host permissions from Myron. And how do I, do you know how to change the video, the view? Is it the view? Do you know how to change the view? Myron no longer has co-hosting rights. I just want to change the view, just put the laptop up there.
I'll turn the share, please just share the screen.
Who's there? iPhone, iPad, desk, it should be from the desktop, right?
Yeah.
See what Myron does.
I'm going to do this.
I guess it's view.
Is the computer plugged in?
Computer is plugged in.
That's what I just clicked.
We're the host, we're the host, so we should be able to.
He did that and shows that.
Share the screen from Rogue Peeps, who's going to make co-host at meeting. No, we're probably okay, we probably don't even need it.
I'm not even sure. Yeah, that's not for, for Myron.
I'm sorry, my technological skills are lacking.
Is that your next degree, applicant?
I'm very sympathetic.
I'm hopeful.
Good evening, I'm with the commission for the record. My name is Steve Finn. I represent applicants on this exhibition fill permit. For quick context, I'd just like to remind everybody that this is a re-application for an exhibition fill permit that this commission granted almost 10 years ago. This application is identical to the application you've already granted, except for the fact that I'm not asking for waivers from the zoning regulations this time because we got variances. So this is a project you've already completely vetted the last time. You approved it, granted it was about a four to one with, with Conman, Chairman O'Reilly, Commissioner Maini and Commissioner Westland voting in favor, and Commissioner Ambrosi voting nay. I believe that Commissioner Lupo was on the panel last time, but was an alternate. I don't recall whether you were on the panel last time or not, but I think you were an alternate. But in any event, that's the context. After you granted that last exhibition fill permit, the applicants commenced the work. They commenced the work using the protocols and the conditions that you all had put in place. One of those conditions required a site monitor from NSafe. You had a site monitor to monitor the entire process and report back to you. My understanding is in May of this year, Bill Hyple of NSafe, the independent expert retained by you to monitor the situation, made a full report to you and indicated that there were absolutely no problems with the project to date with regard to any filling that had been implemented under the permit that you had already granted. Just to end out the history really quickly, the waivers that you had granted the last time in connection with that first permit were declared invalid by a judge. The judge said to us during the argument, you need to get variances. We went to the Monroe's EVA, we got the variances, but we had to come back to you to rebless the permit that you had already approved. Last time we were here on this pending application, which was about three weeks ago, right before Thanksgiving, the, Mr. Chairman, you, you decided over my, I think, respectful objection to keep the hearing open until tonight. I think your, your position was that you might need to consult with legal counsel. In addition, Commissioner Ambrosi at the last hearing wanted to keep the hearing open because we had submitted that NSafe report that you had all seen back in May, but we had resubmitted it that, that day. And Commissioner Ambrosi wanted time to review that NSafe report. Now, as far as I'm concerned, I don't think any other commissioners had any other issues that required the hearing to be kept open. I know Commissioner Condon, you were not here the last time. And so we are back here tonight. There is one additional thing that I want to address quickly. And that is that Commissioner Ambrosi did ask at the last hearing for testing. He wanted some additional testing. And my client, frankly, I don't think was required to do that. It was not a request of the commission as a whole. But again, trying to be open and transparent and trying to get this moving to closure as quickly as possible, my client undertook to do as much testing as they could given the circumstances. And they did do testing. They did six different tests on two different dates. I believe Kevin or somebody else can address that. We submitted the test results. My understanding is the test results, which may not have been as, the full planically a test that could be done by, if you had more time and, and, and better techniques given this current status of the property, is that all the test results that we do have came back fine. So we think we are in a position to close the hearing. I know there's an intervenor here, or at least he's probably positioned to intervene. Kevin did a good job of reminding you what the standard is. There has been no evidence that there is any environmental damage that would be caused by this permit, which again, you've already issued. In fact, the evidence to date is even stronger than it was back then because we've had the benefit of the NSafe's monitor there, monitoring the work that's been done to date under that first permit. So with that, I'm going to sit down. I believe the intervenor is going to probably want to address you again. And Mr. Chairman, I would really reserve, ask you to reserve judgment so that I can hear his arguments and respond to those arguments. But I see no reason to anticipate his arguments until they're made. Okay, I'll turn it over to Kevin now.
Thanks, Attorney Finn. For the record, Kevin Sole, licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, Sole Engineering Offices here in Monroe. I don't have much to add. I was just going to simply summarize as was discussed at the last hearing. There was an additional request for analytical results regarding the groundwater. Groundwater test samples were taken on, I believe, November 30th and then, or, excuse me, we submitted two sets of reports, one from November 20th, November 30th, one day in December 5th. So the samples taken at the end of the site, the part of the field where all the material was placed. Again, the only material that was placed was native to the site. The, there was a test to the north end, and then there were two tests further south of the property. And I think all of those results, they're labeled north, east and west. The initial report was for minerals and metals. The supplemental one was for all volatile organic compounds. And the water's clean, as it was before, as it is now, as it has been. Derek Jones, he provided some commentary saying that it's part of our response. You know, I think, I think this commission did a really, really good job on his application. His application was submitted, submitted really straight, regimented, requiring that they were followed. The work was completed in a great way, and the site looks so much better today than it did prior to the initial approval. So.
Thank you, Mr. Sole. We'll go first to the commissioners for questions, starting on my left.
No questions? Thank you for doing the stall casting.
I'm good. No questions.
Commissioner Ambrosi?
On the report, acetone.
Yes.
It's highlighted.
Yep. So that was, that was one of the responses that Derek Jones, our LAP, commented on. That is, there was a trace of acetone detected in one sample. However, this is a common lab contaminant and almost certainly not present in the water. Regardless, the detection is well below the 700 micrograms per liter drinking water standard.
Where does acetone come?
Lab contaminants.
What else?
I don't know.
I'd say it can come from landfill. It can come from.
Well, it's considerably below the drinking water standard.
I'm saying it is.
Same.
Acetone is not normally occurring.
Right, that's why we mean it's common lab.
I had concern with that. That's why I asked you on this. The water to be tested periodically while you're filling this hole just to make sure that these levels don't go up. I mean, that's where I stand. I don't have a problem with filling the hole. One thing is, I mean, you bring in probably, you're gonna bring in any fill, which is CND material, right?
There's no question. The protocol that was previously approved, that is part of this record.
You're gonna. But you're not gonna process any fill on the property, right?
In accordance with the previous approval, we are. There will be processing of material that's brought up that was previously approved.
You want kind of, just sort of buy this because it was a long time ago. But what kind of processing are you gonna do? Like, you're gonna crush the.
Sorting and sizing, right sizing the material so it can be placed in engineered control decks.
You're gonna sort, you're gonna take, you're not gonna bring any metal or anything like that? Or you're gonna bring metal in and sort it out of the concrete?
If recycled concrete, which meets the definition of clean fill by DEP, that is brought to the site.
It says.
Separated.
I mean, I just have four questions. I don't wanna get into like we did last time. So the processing part of it is you're gonna bring in concrete with rebar in it?
If recycled concrete does come to the site, it would be sorted.
You agreed not to do that in the application.
That's what I thought. You weren't gonna do that.
Yeah, there's a line in there, I'm pretty sure. Because it was inconsequential.
Yeah. I thought that was still incorporated. But either way, it would be handled accordingly according to the protocol that was provided, the previously approved.
Okay, so. So the other question I had to ask you, you don't plan on bringing in any asphalt or anything like that?
No, there was some asphalt on the site.
No, we know there was. I know that. But you don't plan on doing any of that? And.
It's also part of the conditions on.
But I don't, I mean, because it's that long document that they have. It's like crazy. I mean, it's not like we have one app with all these papers. Now, it's like a million pages, you get me? So those are questions I had. And my only concern is, you know, I just wanna make sure this site stays safe. The groundwater stays safe because everybody in this town, not a lot of people are on city water. A lot of people are still on well water. And, you know, being a GAA water site and getting close to that, which I am very, very concerned about that. And that's, you know, and that's why I'd say that I would like to see groundwater while this project is being going on, that groundwater is being tested in certain parts of the property. And I don't understand why that would be a problem.
Mr. Ambrosi, I think I can assuage your concerns. In connection with the inland wetlands permitting for this project, which is identical to the project that's before you, the inland wetlands commission hired an independent expert from Arcadis by a name Russell Lorenzo, who I think is a hydrogeologist and an LEP. And in the inland wetlands commission application 2020-03R, Mr. Lorenzo's report was entered into that record. And I think that record plus the record before you the last time is all incorporated into this application. And in this letter, Mr. Lorenzo, again, I think as a hydrogeologist, states, and an LEP, the filling of the quarry will have a negligible impact on the watershed because water is not being diverted to another watershed. In addition, the impacted area is very small when compared to the entire watershed. And I also want to add that in connection with both applications, all three applications, inland wetlands, prior excavation fill permit application, and the pending excavation fill application, Mr. Solely's office gave notice to Aquarian Water. Okay? And they also were out to the site. They did a site visit at some point. We've heard no concerns from Aquarian. In addition, with all respect, it's my position, and I think it's pretty clear that while you may have, this Commission has purview over the fill, okay? With regard to testing water and contaminants in the water, that's DEP's purview. And to the extent there are concerns, first of all, it's gonna be a major concern to the property owner. But it also, if people have concerns, Mr. Metropolis has been all over DEP trying to get them out to this site. DEP has been involved, but they found no concerns. If there aren't, look, and anything can happen, right? Someone can throw something a mile away and it could enter into my client's wells. Someone's gonna have to do something about that. But you're talking about potential harm, not actual harm. And I think that's all this Commission.
You can say that I'm talking about potential harm. I'm talking about that at one point, that hole filled up with groundwater. So at one point, that hole was down into where groundwater was. And so that's my concern. My concern's always been that because you hit groundwater and you hit a GAA water site that were, you're basically in groundwater. That the site wasn't like, if you didn't have like 20 feet before you hit groundwater, no, you hit groundwater and that thing filled up and it looked like a lake. That's the only concern that I have.
That water was tested and all of it.
And I'm saying, I'm not getting into the argument.
Is there a question here?
No, there's no question.
Okay, have we not answered? No question?
Yes.
Uh, no questions.
No questions.
Okay. If there are any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application, please raise your hands. Attorney Green. Name and address for the record.
Well, we have filed a petition to intervene. And on behalf of your propolis trust fee, my name is Joel Green. I practice law in Bridgeport. The offices of Grand Rose. And it's my pleasure to appear before you on behalf of the intervener this evening. So I'm not quite the public and.
You have been recognized as an intervenor in this here.
Thank you. So I just, I wanna start off. I have to respond to a couple of comments before I go any further. First of all, Attorney Finn has indicated that the inland wetlands commission application is, or is part of this application. And I guess through you, Mr. Chair, I would ask for some clarity on that.
No, it's a separate application.
So.
My understanding, and I can't be 100% clear, but I'm positive, but I believe Mr. Solely asked that the entire record from the prior excavation fill permit application be incorporated into the record for this pending application. And it's also my understanding, Mr. Green, that in connection with the prior excavation fill permit application, you asked for the inland wetlands record to be incorporated into that record. So that would mean that everything is before this Commission.
So.
Your recollection may be better than mine. And if you're wrong, I stand corrected.
So I thank Mr. Finn for his comments. Is that the case? Is it the Commission's position that your former application, through you, Mr. Chair, if it don't, all due respect, through you? Is it the position of the Commission then that the former application before this Commission and the record from the inland wetlands commission application are incorporated into the record in this matter?
The record from the inland wetland application and approval has been submitted as part of the application, the reapplication for the excavation fill permit.
I don't recall that, but if.
I don't know. It lied just to be complete, just so we have it all in one package. It was all there when we received.
So is that, so then the entire record of the inland wetlands approval and the entire record of the previous application that was approved by the Commission and overturned by the court is part of the record in this matter? Is that, yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I believe that Mr. Solely in his application had also asked that the application before the zoning board of appeals be incorporated into the record. And that was in his narrative to this Commission. Is that also to be part of the record in this matter?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And another comment I just have to make while it's sort of still close is there was a comment made about not processing material, meaning crushing concrete to extract the metal from it. And is it the position of this Commission that that was a condition of the last approval, that that could not be done?
I believe it was.
And is the Arcadis report, you, I'm sorry, the NSAFE report, do you have hard copies of that this evening?
We were given copies. I don't, I didn't bring mine.
Because as I understand it, and also the comment made, that only native material has been put into the, has been used for fill. But my understanding is that the NSAFE report reflects that concrete was crushed and metals were separated. And there's actually, if I'm correct, and if the applicant can clarify that, because I think it's important. I believe that that has occurred on the site and there's been material crushed and metals removed.
Native material was placed below the water level.
Oh, you got it.
Above the water level. Clean fill level.
Okay. And what about the crushing of concrete and the extraction of metal on the site?
Yeah.
All right, so existing material on the site has been processed on the site.
Right.
Okay. And it's, as I understand it, that is conduct that as a condition of any approval won't be permitted in the future. Meaning bringing materials on site. In response to Commissioner Ambrosi's question, is it the position of the Commission that concrete with rebar in it potentially?
I believe it was a condition of approval, yes.
That it cannot be.
That it was agreed, that would not be going on.
That no new material would come on.
I think, what, I think to be.
With the rebar specifically.
I think we should be careful here. I think whatever your prior approvals states.
That's where we're going.
That's what you're gonna do.
All right, so this is, and as I indicated when I was last before you, this is a new application. The old application is a novelty essentially by virtue of the court's ruling. Attorney Finn and I have each characterized the court's ruling in the appeal. I have a copy of the memorandum of decision. And just for the record, I'd be happy to submit it. And I don't know if Attorney Finn has any objection to that, just for clarity, because we're both, we both seem to be characterizing what.
You could submit it, but we've seen it.
Okay.
It's distributed amongst the commissioners.
So I'll submit this formally by name for the record.
Thank you.
So this should be added then to the record as an exhibit?
So I had indicated to the Commission when I last appeared before you that this is a brand-new application. While you have this evening confirmed that the old materials will be incorporated, this application stands on its own. And there are requirements under your regulations that I had suggested to you that the existing conditions are not what they were two years ago when the last application, or a year and a half ago when the last application was submitted. And it is the position of my client that the present application should reflect the rest of the conditions and not the conditions that existed 18 months ago. The applicant has plainly conceded that it has been filling the site and has submitted materials that confirm that the site will be filled. I, has been filled. I note that in the narrative, the applicant went through the requirements for an excavation and fill permit in 6.4. Amongst those requirements, and the applicant highlighted many of the same sections, are 6.4.4C, which requires site topographical plans showing existing and proposed contours. This application does not show the existing contours. It shows the contours from 18 months ago before the site was altered by the applicant. 6.4 point, and that section also requires cross-section drawings. They have not been provided. What has been provided is what existed 18 months ago and not what exists on the site as of the date of this application. 6.4.4I requires showing of things, for example, is existing ponds and watercourses. And your regulations specifically state that the site plans and the materials submitted by the applicant must conform with Article 7 of your regulations. And in the vacuum, when you adopted these regulations, this Commission must have contemplated that you wanted current drawings and you wanted current conditions. This is a new application. And 7.3 of the regulations, your regulations specifically say, and again, the excavation and fill regulations require that site plans and surveys and materials submitted by the applicant must conform with Section 7 of your, Article 7, Section 7 of your zoning regulations. 7.3.1B specifically says, "All maps, plans, documents, reports, and data as may be submitted with an application shall be current, open, pren, completed within the previous six months." That's what your regulations require. That didn't happen. The contours are two and a half years old and go back to '20 and '21. And the applicant just took those documents, altered the lot line to show the lot line revision that was purported to have been created, and then submitted the same data. So the application is effective right out of the box because it doesn't reflect the current conditions of the site. There are a number of other standards that haven't been met. For example, there is no written statement from the tax collector reflecting the tax status of the property. That is a specific requirement of having, getting an excavation and fill permit. It's not in there. There are a number of other infirmities. And I've gotta say, well, other details. For example, conservation wanted a, required a conservation easement area. That's not shown on the current site plans or on the current plans for you as to where that material is located, where that restrictions are located. And there are a number of other ways in which the drawings submitted don't meet the mapping standards that we require. At the end of the day, as I started when I spoke to, as I've said so many times to this Commission, all that my client wants is to assure that the groundwater will be clean and the groundwater that runs under his property from this property potentially. And I understand the gradient and I understand the discussions as to the flow of groundwater. And here, the applicant is proposing all these activities. I thought it was interesting that this Commission suggested at the last hearing that I have, that my client has to test its groundwater for someone else's application. And that just strikes me as, well, something that your regulations don't begin to require. If you are inclined to proceed in this application and reapprove or approve this new application again, then as any condition, I would suggest that you add a provision that requires the applicant to provide site testing and monitoring on an ongoing basis adjacent to the property line with my client's property and other properties on the site. There's no question that there's fill that was brought into the ground, put into the ground as part of the fill. There were unregulated activities that were being conducted. And this applicant is always careful to point out that the. And this applicant is always careful to point out that the previous owner had engaged in activities. We dispute that obviously, and we suggest that the activities continued after this applicant acquired the property. But this commission should, in the exercise of its jurisdiction, impose conditions that assure adequate groundwater monitoring and testing on an ongoing basis as part of any filling activity on this site. Just bear with me. With that, I will. I will rest and I want to thank the commission for your attention. I know this has been a long road. Unfortunately, we still have a ways to go, but at least for this leg of the journey, thank you for your patience. I don't know if you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Attorney Finn.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public tonight that would like to comment on this application? Are any members of the public online? Seeing none, I believe you wanted to close the hearing, Mr. Soli. I believe the majority of the commissioners are ready to close the hearing if you want.
I think we're ready, you know, just, just some high-level items, you know, we did, we do provide a plan that shows the current topography that was provided as part of our response to the county comments. This project was approved over six phases. We're in phase four. We're certainly in accordance with, with, we believe, your regulations and your mapping requirements. And it will be back. We're not going anywhere. We're hopeful that we have a future application. This property isn't going away, it's not vanishing. This commission is currently well within, will continue to be within your rights and will continue to abide by the conditions that were previously approved.
Okay, thank you, then this hearing is closed. Moving on, we have deliberations and determination.
Are we closing the public hearing, Mr. Chair?
Public hearing is closed. The first operation is RAA 2023. Now, this one has already been voted on and this shouldn't be on the agenda. You all voted on that. Me not voting for the last meeting. However, RAA 2023-11 file 1034E, that is 1271 Monroe Turnpike, you directed staff to draft a amendment, a RAA Zone Regulation Text Amendment, which is before you. The commissioners have that before them. Seated is Mayini, Condon, Ambrosi, Westland, O'Reilly on this, the chair on the motion to approve the draft regulation, RAA 2023-11.
I make a motion to approve the draft RAA 2023-11 file 1034E.
Have a motion. Second. A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
If not, I'll call the roll, starting on my left.
Westland, yes.
Mayini, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Ambrosi, no.
Condon, yes.
The vote is four yeses and one no. The draft amendment is passed. Okay, we have some new applications on the way. So tonight, in your packet, in your box, you have some information on these new applications. Please review them. Do you want to go over and the highlights?
Certainly.
The new applications?
So the first application on the list is SED 2023-11, file number 1659A. It contains 139, 141, and 201 Turkey Rusht Road, as well as 30 Cobblers Hill Court. This is an SED application for 99 city family homes with a sewer treatment facility on site. The second one, RAA 2023-12, file number 1035E at 205 Monroe Turnpike. This is going to be a SDD application, so it'll be a text amendment and a zone change. And that is for 205 Monroe Turnpike where they're looking to build a self-storage facility in the back of the Noble Gas opposite the new Aldies that broke ground two weeks ago. There is a subdivision application, subdivision 2023-04, file number 1273C for 127 Main Street. That subdivision application is for Pond View. This is, has to do with the Department of Public Health that requires each septic be on their own parcel. And because there's eight buildings, each with their own septic, making eight septics, it needs to be eight parcels. The subdivision is in line with making it eight parcels. SEDP 2024-01, file number 157 for 515 through 517 Main Street. This too will be an SDD application for a self-storage facility located at that, that same address. And finally, there's a ZCC for a boundary change. ZCC-2024-01, file number 1027D for the same address. And that's the zone boundary change, to change the application from B1 and a small portion of RF1 to an SDD number seven. No, it's a number five.
Thank you. I'd like to go back to deliberate, actually, we can deliberate on the excavation and fill permit that we just heard. Since it's only age thirty, we do have time. How does the commission feel about excavation and fill permit?
I'm good.
Any new? Anything else you'd like to add to it?
I'm good.
Good. Do you want to run deliberation? Yeah, sure.
I think we should monitor groundwater. That was part of it anyway. Isn't that part of it anyway?
Well, we don't monitor groundwater routinely on excavation and fill permits, especially since we're already above groundwater.
Because we don't.
At this point, we have plan or testing that shows that the groundwater is clean. We're monitoring very well the fill that's coming in.
On our excavation and fill permits, we're not bringing in clean fill and CND material. Usually, most of the time in excavation, fill permits, it's usually dirt, rock, and stuff like that people bring in. This is, this is, how many yards we bring in? 400,000 yards? Right, so that's a lot of material. And when you get like acetone, and I've talked to people on, on that too, about like on the cement and everything like that, the sealers that they use around the windows and stuff like that, that's toxic stuff. It's supposed to be real. I'm not just gonna say that you're gonna get it all out of there, but I'm just worried about the groundwater. And I've always been worried about it. Now, when I told this commission I was worried about the groundwater, and I think you asked a couple times, I guess when EnSafe was here, that have you tested the groundwater or have you done anything? And you said, oh, I did a smell test. And you said, well, what's that smell test? What the, did that? Why aren't we testing certain things? And so we don't do that. And so I'm, I'm a firm believer that if you're gonna bring in, you know, clean fill to CND material and stuff like that and certain stuff, that the groundwater should be monitored. I mean, it's, we're on wells here. I'm a firm believer that should be done. And, you know, people say, well, you know, the commission can't do that or, or whatever. I don't know, you know, but I'm a firm believer that we want to make sure that as the site is being filled during the next, how many years it's gonna take for, for it to be filled, that somebody should be monitoring groundwater.
Well, they're monitoring the material that's being brought in.
They are monitoring materials.
We still have.
Like I said last year before, that there's stuff that's on concrete, and I've talked to people that do construction about that, about CND materials. In fact, there was a commissioner that used to sit on here that I talked to about it, and he does construction work. And he says that, you know, there's what they call hot zones that were around the windows and stuff that they have to be removed when they, when they take buildings down. Not all that material is taken out of that. And so it's like, it's this, it's, there's a whole thing about it. And, you know, I don't mind him filling the whole bleke. I don't. I want him to get it done. I want it to be, it should never got to that point. And I don't know if they're getting paid to bring the material in or how that goes. I know none of that. But, you know, I'm sure that the cost of, I mean, I don't understand why it's a problem to monitor groundwater. I just don't understand that, that when you bring in material and think that the applicant would want to make sure that there wasn't anything happening to groundwater, and I think this commission would want to make sure. But, you know, I'm only one vote.
But we do have that, the LIP is going to report back to us continually as he has.
But the LIP has never tested any groundwater.
LEP. Sorry.
We have never had him test any.
No, I don't think he thought it was necessary.
Never did. Not that he thought, I don't think we ever required him because he said, he had a meeting one time that nobody required him.
No, we didn't require it because I don't believe he thought it was necessary.
Well, I don't know about.
In his report.
No. We even asked him that, me and you doing all that.
I think, I think in his report, he stated that the groundwater was clean.
No, I don't think he ever did because I thought he was talking about it.
I'm sure that they.
But I mean, that's, that's where I stand. I don't know what the best of this commission's thinking.
That's where I'm at.
Anybody else have any comments?
Well, one pain point that I have with the approval process here is when a requirement is made and carried out at the time of the approval, and the applicant comes back here, we then find a way to raise the bar and put some new requirements on, and it wastes a lot of people's time and a lot of money. It stalls the project. And my question at that point would be, when, back when we approved this conditionally, why did we not ask for this at that time?
Well, no, I did ask for that at that time. I did ask for that to be done. I did ask that we should monitor groundwater because I was concerned about the material being put into the groundwater. And they said, well, we're gonna use the native material first and then put stuff on there. But I had concerns. That's why I voted no, because nobody on this commission ever wanted to, to monitor groundwater. I always wanted to monitor groundwater because as soon as they hit groundwater, which was not Mr. Carp's fault, I understand all that, but as soon as you hit groundwater and the thing filled up, and I mean, we saw the picture of it. It was like a lake over there. And so in that order, I understand that, but now you're putting material into it. You're putting CND material, you're not putting native material.
Manifested material.
Whatever, yeah, that's what I'm saying. You're putting, I'm saying you're putting.
You can't say, Leon, not to, not to argue with you, but you can't just say whatever. Whatever doesn't.
I'm just saying.
It's manifested. It's specific to the approval that we approved, right?
And we have them monitored there.
You can't say you understand that and argue with us about what they're putting in.
I mean, we have them monitored there. If he believes that he should be monitoring the groundwater, he will.
Based off of the data that he's getting from the fill.
Correct.
And we can't just assume that every piece of concrete that gets taken out of Connecticut is coming into this hole.
I'm not saying it is.
Any other comments or questions from the commissioners?
The LEP stands, right? Like as they fill? That's.
Yes, he stays until.
I don't know, we didn't talk about that.
Yeah.
I thought the LEP stayed throughout the rest of the application. We've never talked, we never made a requirement to, to have LEP.
I think the LEP stays throughout the.
Have we?
We're going to be voting on essentially the same approval.
I know that, but does that stand with this?
Prior approval.
Well.
Because it's still standing on the same. I believe, is that one of our conditions we're putting in there?
We will be voting on the same approval that we voted on the last time. And you had a copy of it at the last meeting. Correct. Yes, we handed out copies of the approval.
Yes.
We handed out copies of the previous approval for the P&amp;Z application that was.
We vote on this or whatever, you're gonna bring in.
Yeah, well, we will direct.
You're gonna, you're gonna make up a new approval, right?
We're gonna make up a new approval for this application.
But it's gonna be exactly the same as the old.
Correct.
Unless it's all different.
It will change.
Unless your approval is different, if your approval's different, it'll be a new approval. If it'll be the same approval, it'll be the same.
With the same language.
Minus the waivers.
Correct.
Minus the waivers.
New dates, minus the waivers because they got.
I'll have a draft for you next, next meeting if that's the decision you make.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and the one other thing, just follow up with the task collector's office and make sure they did whatever might need to be done.
Are you ready to vote tonight?
You better pay your taxes.
Do you want to vote tonight or wait for that?
Um, I mean, we could vote, I'll wait for the actual draft. If it's gonna be the same one, I'm, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve EFP 2023 file 0464 Cambridge and 4 Independence Drive as previously drafted with the added.
All right, have a motion. Second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, call the roll, starting on my left.
Westland, yes.
Mayini, yes.
O'Reilly, yes. Ambrosi.
Condon, yes.
Motion passes, so we'll draft an approval. Okay, from that down to the end of the agenda here. I think we need to schedule a subcommittee.
Oh, yeah. When are we doing this? I don't know why I look at my notes.
How's the 18th work for you?
The 18th, and then we meet the 21st, right? Or no?
No, we do not have a meeting on the 21st. This will be your last meeting until the new year, and then I'll see you all on the 4th. I know, don't miss me too much.
18th at 5:30?
18th at 5:30.
Monday, the 18th, 5:30. Bill's got pizza.
If that's what you want.
Yeah, pepperoni though.
Okay, we don't have any minutes.
He's writing it down.
We don't have any correspondence. Any commissioner reports? Any land use staff reports other than the new application research?
Staff will be working on a new application for our SDD process so that it's more clear that it's actually a zone change as well as a text amendment. Because each SDD requires that text amendment to be there and it requires that zone change. So instead of doing two applications, we're gonna combine them into an application, so we're gonna work on a template for that.
And we'll have that language choice.
The language will precede that application change. That application will be something we'll work on, but the, the language change, I'd like to get at that on your agenda for the 18th.
The zone to parcel.
Yes.
Why don't we vote on O'Reilly's? Did we close them? Do you want to deliberate on O'Reilly's? Okay. Let's deliberate on O'Reilly's. So we have the SEDP 2023, the bone, zone boundary change, which is really integral to the SCP. Is it two votes? Yeah.
But we're gonna deliberate at the same time.
All right, so the chair on the table, motion to approve ZCA 2023-05.
I make a motion to approve ZCA 2023-05 file 1026B.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All right, so this is, this is making it a MDD, a Main Street Design District overlay. This will be SDD number, I don't know, five or?
Five, I believe it is.
It'll be SDD number five, which means that there really aren't any bulk standards that is to be determined by us. So let's vote just on changing the zone. It's an LOR now. I'll call the roll, starting on my left.
Westland, yes.
Mayini, yes.
O'Reilly, yes. Did I discuss it? The zone change, we're just not talking about the SCP. This is just to change the zone.
I have a problem with changing the zone.
All right, well, yeah, we were discussing it, but he didn't say anything.
No, because you.
Go ahead.
My problem is that none of, any of this meets any of the setbacks on the property.
It doesn't meet setbacks for a LOR, no.
Right.
Well, it might.
It's not even, no, it's not even close. No, 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 it's not even close to LOR. It's not even, I looked it up.
Right, but that's why we're changing it to.
I understand. And so the other thing is that it can't require enough parking spaces for the size of the lot. Because the size of the building. Because the size of the building.
Spaces on the use, not on the size of the lot.
And I understand that, but that use is not always there. That use could turn out to be any kind of.
But they would have to come back for another SEP, at which time we would say that have to increase parking. That's what I wanted.
And there are places that you can add parking spots.
They weren't on the restaurant.
Yes, sir.
Because they took out some.
There are spots you can.
We asked them to take some out.
Where the one up against the insurance company, you could go to the right towards the street, you could add like two or three more there. You can move the dumpster location. You could add a couple over there.
I just don't, I just don't think that if they didn't leave all the setbacks. I mean, I understand that we did this. They just designed so that we can put other, like in a LOR zone, we can put something else there. But I was understanding when we did it that it would meet all the setbacks to the property, the property lines. And obvious, that's not what.
The LOR setbacks.
Right.
That would be the point of it.
What would be the point of it is that to put the buildings just in case if it goes to change to something else, that we would have enough requirements to accommodate.
You would have to come back to us because it's.
You don't have to come back. No, it's, no, we already have a zone.
No, so if we change.
It'll stay as the.
But if the use changes, they have to come back to us. Back in front of.
Right.
And that.
And so if it turned into be something else that record a restaurant that needed 50 spaces, it would never fit in. I understand that.
So they can't sell it then to the landlord who's locking himself in here.
No, I'm just saying that I don't like putting something on a lot that's so small. You're putting a 7,000 square foot building on a lot that really, that it's really confined. You know, it's not like that you have any expansion room on that lot.
Yeah. Your concerns are heard as far as I'm concerned. I get exactly where you're coming from. But in this case, the auto parts, sales, and distribution business has changed. There's a lot of online shopping. You know this better.
I know that. I know that. And I understand.
A lot of their parts are getting delivered. They're getting delivered to people like yourself. And people are also going in there. If you think of any auto parts store in town, I can't think of any store that had more than five or 10 spots fall at any given time.
No, no, I know. I understand that. And that's not what, that's not what I'm after. And I know what this issue.
I understand, but we've talked about if it changes.
Right. If, you know, the change is that, I understand that. If it changes, that's why I have an issue with when it changes.
That's their problem, not ours.
No, and I have that. But I'm saying it's not like, but I'm saying if somebody come in and say, well, I'm gonna, I'm only need those 25. And they sell it to a person and they put a restaurant in there, okay? And then for some reason it gets approved because it gets approved or whatever. And then people are out in the streets and they're parking across the other way or something. That's my only concern is that if the lot is too small, that you're basically saying, yeah, this is the use. So if they go out, if they go out and that building is gonna stand there, and then what that turns into? Then it turns into an empty building that we don't want to see. It turns into, that's why I just don't like putting stuff on a small lot that really can't ever be expanded.
I think it's a multi-use building. I think that that building with those amount of spots could potentially be occupied by a lot.
No, I have, and I have.
And I think restaurants, worst case scenario. And I don't think that building.
No, and I don't think it would. But I'm just using it as an example that that could happen.
It's absolutely. I would be right with you. I don't, you wouldn't put a restaurant there.
And, you know, and the other thing is, is like, it's. I have things less than an acre. Like we've managed this already. And I just don't want these things to start popping up all over the place because that's what's gonna happen. They're gonna pop up over there, they're gonna pop up over here, they'll pop up over here. And then they're gonna use that Main Street Design District to put everything on a small lot. It doesn't work. That's not what it was for. It was for us to use it to, this is a LOR that we knew that light office space is not gonna ever happen again because everybody's doing a lot of stuff at home and this and this and that. And we're trying to get businesses to come in and good businesses come in. But I thought that it would be on lots that would be more. Comedy. I mean, they made it 7,000 square feet. We didn't require them to drop it down. We never did that. If we did, they could put more parking spaces on it or it would be a small lot and accommodate more stuff. But we didn't do any of that. And, you know, and the other thing is like in our regulations, it also says it should look New England. A square building is not New England. I understand that they got the, you know, it looks 100% better than what first came in.
For sure.
First came in, but there's no roof pitches or anything. And we used to do that in the commission. And Bill used to be a stickler on doing that to make it look more colonial for Monroe. You go into Newtown and look at their buildings. Go into Newtown Center, look at their buildings. They're gorgeous. You walk in there, people want to spend time because you're looking at beautiful, gorgeous buildings. And I don't know why we don't ask for that as commission. We don't do it.
Well, we can't ask for it, but because it's not a village district.
I understand that, but I'm saying. No, and I'm saying, no, we could require that under this. For sure.
Require.
Because we don't have to change the zone. No, we can require. And that's what the regulation was. And that's what he said we could do. We can require the building to look more colonial. And that's part of our, it says it right in our regulation.
Well, because, you know, you think about one of the reasons why this was put in place. You know, take, for instance, the tractor supply that we lost, okay? We lost it. We didn't have the MDD tool. So we were unable to, you know, to benefit from that. They went over into Newtown. They set up shop. I wouldn't classify that as a beautiful, gorgeous building.
They did a nice job there.
That's not a colonial looking building.
Not at all. It looks like the tractor supply is supposed to look. And if I'm in a grocery shop there, I want to be able to identify that particular building is where I'm going.
No, and I understand that. What I'm saying is, I don't think.
You're looking for an O'Reilly's. You want to see, you know.
There were O'Reilly's and it is an O'Reilly's. But I've seen some O'Reilly's. I mean, I've seen them. You know, I went on the website and looked. And let me tell you, in certain towns that probably require them to have it look a little bit more colonial, they're looking colonial. They still have all this stuff on there to make it look a little more colonial because that's what the town required them to do, to bring their business into town.
Their newest one in the area. This is nicer than the newest one.
Oh, no, it is. The one down in Bridgeport. Yeah, right. But that's, you know, I'm just saying, I mean, I think moving forward, that then I have an issue with this because I really don't. I'm just saying that I don't want to throw these on these postage stamps lots.
Then we gotta change that zone. Well, moving forward, do we have that ability to require architectural changes?
The SDD.
And the SDD?
The SDD and MDD go hand in hand. And there is a requirement within them that talks about the architectural. It's so nice that you can't not approve it. It goes into language along those lines. I don't have it in front of me, so please don't quote me.
It should be there. It should, we should make it look like, I mean, I'm just saying, I go around into other towns and I look the way they are. And I just don't, you know, it's like, you know, like, and for a perfect example, Rob, and I'm gonna say to you, for a perfect example, Starbucks, I understand that's a small building there. But like they said, oh, that's our new design. Did you go to see the one in Strafford? That's right off the highway in Strafford? That thing is gorgeous. I mean, it's gorgeous. I mean, it's not, and that was just built. And they just put it there. Like if you're going before you go off to, before you go over the bridge, like, you know, to go, you know, off to 95, you get off that exit there, there's a Starbucks there. That's a brand new Starbucks. That thing looks gorgeous.
Probably a lot bigger too, right?
It's a lot bigger. But it looks nice. I mean, and they said that that was their standard design, square box. That's not their standard design.
Did you see the brand new one in Bridgeport right next to the O'Reilly's?
That's gorgeous too.
It's okay. The one that's coming here is nicer.
Nicer, you think?
Than the one in Bridgeport?
Well, look at the one off of the.
I don't think the one coming here looks bad at all.
I don't know. I just, I mean, I'm just saying.
It looks bad. It's that house that's there.
The house is gone.
Yeah. Well, that was.
No, I understand that. I understand.
But it's so colonial.
Oh, but that house was left there, Rob. The house was left there because if they took the house down.
But if they hadn't. We hadn't been able to utilize this tool.
What's that?
If we haven't been able to utilize this tool and allow Starbucks to come in, when would that house ever go anywhere? Nothing would ever work in that spot.
And if they didn't use the center of the dividing of the road of our.
We'd still get to look at that house.
But I'm saying to you, it could, it could have, I understand. That there is a whole different thing. I think on that part, and I think that should have been expanded more and we could have done something or looked at it a little bit more. That's what I would have done. I had no problem doing it there. I just didn't want to put it on a small, tiny lot like that to try to fit all that traffic in there. That I had an issue with. But I'm saying to you, the same thing is.